Great. Good evening. Welcome to the May 14th, 2024 Foxborough School Committee meeting. This meeting will be broadcast live and recorded by Foxborough Cable Access. So, good evening, everyone. In light of the recent election, per the bylaws, we are going to start off our meeting with the board reorganization. So, up first are nominations for Chair of the --
Sarah.
Yes?
Before we begin the reorganization and go to nominations, there's something, there's a practice I think we need to revisit. And I'm asking this, for everyone to consider this, for three reasons. One is, the tenure of our board has changed. Our tenure of the current seated board is less than three years. Second, I think we need to continue to push for transparency in how these decisions are made for reorganization. And third, I want us to be more intentional about all the processes and decisions that we make at our meeting school forward. Again, we want to make sure that the community is aware of what we're doing and we're going to be transparent. We want to take every opportunity we can to educate them on how the board works, what our purpose is. So, what I propose is that before, starting straight with nominations, we actually as a board, review the role of the Chair and the Vice Chair. We look at our agenda for the coming year. What are the things that we know that are happening, that we need to be planned for? And I would also encourage any member who is actually interested in being either the Chair or the Vice Chair to state their intention, that they are interested, and then give reason to the board on why they are interested in performing either the Chair or the Vice Chair role. So, I know typically we go straight to nomination and then second in a vote, but I think that's never felt comfortable to me, because it's not transparent. I do think we have an opportunity, like I said, to educate ourselves and the community on the role of these two positions. And I think it's a really great opportunity for people to express what it is they're -- they want to help the committee accomplish in either one of those roles. So, if the committee would consider that, I would like us to take a step back instead of going, like I said, directly to nominations, to have, just like I said, a review of the role of the Chair and the Vice Chair, a review of what we know, or, you know, what is in the rotation for the agenda this year. We know that there's contract negotiations, things like that. And then finally, I'd like anybody who is interested, I guess, first for the role of Chair and then second for the role of Vice Chair, to state that, and then again, what their reason is for their interest.
I appreciate you bringing that up. I think since we have a committee here, we should probably just see if everyone else is feeling the same way, if they'd like to do that, to follow that procedure, since it is different from anything we've ever done. Does anyone else want to, I guess, are you making a formal motion?
It's not a motion. I guess it's more of a, just a conversation before we get to the point of a motion.
Okay. Well, how do we feel about that? I'm pretty, I'm open to any other input. We are a party of five here, so.
I have perhaps an unfortunate history of slowing our work down sometimes to be reminded of what our process is, so I never need much of a nudge for that. I like that as a process, I guess. I like the idea of having discussions about what the Chair, Vice Chair do as a reminder to the committee. I never think that's a bad thing.
Okay.
In fact, I think it's a good thing. It's interesting, Rob, that you mentioned the year ahead look, at least the things we know. I think we should probably do that regardless, because that's always a nice discussion to have, whether it's at this meeting or not. Like contracts and stuff, or is, you know, big things we know coming up. Taylor's going to come up for review, we hope, and get approved and stuff, whatever is that, and we can ask admin and stuff. I think it's a good idea. I think one of the things I've liked about this committee, just when I moved to town and watching it for years that I wasn't on it, and these last few years that I have been on it, is that I think we're all at our best when we have the discussions and stuff out in the, out in the open, and, because there's a level of trust, and I think that's, that's good. As, going back however many years, when I was a new member, I felt, this is not in recent things, but just the first year I was on, I felt like I didn't know what was going on at first, when they said, hey, welcome to the school committee, you're on it. Oh, by the way, we got to figure out what the Chair and the Vice Chair are going to do. And I was like, okay, what do they do? You know what I mean? And that was not done at a meeting. It was done just through a longtime member being nice to me. And so, anyway.
So, you're in favor of doing that?
Yeah, or whatever. I'm in favor of, or any other ideas that people have, because it's kind of a neat opportunity, right? Like, we got a new committee together. How do we want to, how do we want to run? I know we have our July retreat, and we talk more about goals and stuff, but I'd be open, at least I would hope I'd be open to that discussion anytime.
Sure. Michelle, are you feeling like we need?
If we want to go through, just, you know, peruse the duty of the Chair, then let's do that instead of discussing about, discussing about doing the chair.
Okay. So, we do have in our packet, the roles of the Chair and Vice Chair are here.
Thank you, Jane.
So, and it is, the duties of the Chair of Foxborough School Committee. The Chair, just as a reminder, has any, the same powers as any other member of the school committee, to vote upon all measures coming before it. I'm just going to read this, since it's here, to offer resolutions and to discuss questions. He or she will perform those duties that are consistent with his/her office and those required by law, state regulations, and the school committee. In carrying out the responsibilities, the Chairperson will sign instruments, acts, and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the committee, consult with the Superintendent and the planning of the Foxborough School Committee's agendas, confer with the Superintendent on crucial matters that may occur between Foxborough School Committee meetings, appoint subcommittees subject to Foxborough School Committee approval, call special meetings of the Foxborough School Committee as found necessary, be a public spokesperson for the Foxborough School Committee at all times, except as the responsibility is specifically delegated to others, be responsible for the orderly conduct of all Foxborough School Committee meetings. As presiding officer at all meetings of Foxborough School Committee, the Chairperson will call the meeting to order at the appointed time, announce the business to come before the Foxborough School Committee in proper order, enforce the Foxborough School Committee's policies relating to the order of business and the conduct, and the conduction of meetings, reorganize persons who desire to speak, and protect the speaker who has the floor from disturbance or interference. Explain what the effect of a motion would be if this is not clear to members, restrict discussion to the question when a motion before the school committee, answer all parliamentary inquiries, put motions to a vote stating definitively and clearly the vote and result thereof. The duties of the Vice Chairman and Secretary, which is what I've been doing for the last year, the Vice Chairperson of the Foxborough School Committee will act in the absence of the Chairperson as Presiding Officer of the Foxborough School Committee, and will perform such other duties as may be delegated or assigned to him or her. The Secretary will keep or cause to be kept an accurate journal of all Foxborough School Committee meetings, will comply with the state law and Foxborough School Committee policy regarding notification of meetings, and will render such reports as may be required by the state or the town.
Thank you. So, that is Policy File BDB, and I see something on the agenda already for the Policy Subcommittee to update the language from Chairman to Chairperson as appropriate. So, whoever goes on that Subcommittee.
Whoever goes on Policy can put a pin in that. As far as the reorg I'm talking about, for this, for the calendar year coming up, we have, you know, that would be something that the Superintendent would have to get involved with, I don't think, for the sake of the time in the meeting, sitting and going through the entire calendar for the year.
So, we know that this cycle, because I did some research, we know that this cycle, there are five or six contract negotiations up this cycle, which is not something that we've had. It's the largest number every three years, I think is the largest number. Is that accurate, Dr. Bertos? So, this, we happen to be, that's the cycle this year. So, that's the teacher's contract, I think, is this year, the assistant contract is this year. Those are the two largest, I believe, and there are three or four more? Mr. Yukna, Dr. Bertos?
Four more, food service, extended day. Food service, extended day.
Secretary.
Transportation.
Assistant.
Secretaries. Yeah, those are the four.
Okay. So, we have six sets of contract negotiations that come up, and the role of the Chair typically, and the Vice Chair typically in those contract negotiations is what?
So, the role of the Chair and the Vice Chair, the Chair, the role of the Chair and the Vice Chair are basically?
In the contract negotiations.
In the contract negotiations.
So, the last, so the last.
So, I wasn't Chair or Vice Chair three years ago, but I sat in.
Right. So, the last cycle of this round, we had, the Chair and the Vice Chair were on the teacher negotiation, and two other members at large were on the assistant, and I don't believe we had representation on the other contract negotiations. Okay. Are there, so, and we do also anticipate, so, the budget this year is going to probably require, based on everything that we see happening, and, you know, at town meeting last night, budget requiring, so the Policy Subcommittee is going to have an important role, and then potentially the Chairperson's participation in that Subcommittee is also going to have a potential role. So, I don't know if there are any other events that are potentially not our normal cycle outside of the normal agendas. We have a curriculum review, and updates from Student Services, and those things that happen, that we can, we know that calendar in advance, right? But do we at this time anticipate, I guess this is a question for Dr. Bertos, Dr. Burrows, and Mr. Yukna, do, are we anticipating anything that is not, that has not been part of the normal cycle over the past two years? Again, recognizing that the majority of the tenure of our board, or that the tenure of our board is less than one full term. So, we don't have the same experience that previous boards have had of continuity, and so I want to make sure that we are aware of anything that, based on your continuity with this organization, or with the board, that we need to be made aware of as we consider filling these two roles.
Be the Taylor project, if the statement of interest goes forward, you have a school committee member that sits on the school building committee.
How about Strategic? Is that a Vice Chair?
And then we'll be looking forward to the next Plan for Success, because that will sunset at the end of '24, '25, too.
Okay.
Okay.
It's going to be busy.
It is going to be busy here, yes.
Now that you bring all of that up.
Yes. I'm just going to, I'm just going to kind of get, get back to where we need to be on the agenda, because we've gone way over on time, and also, we're getting into things where we're going to get into conversations again when we do get to Subcommittee reorganization. So, I totally appreciate what you're saying, but I do feel that at this point, we should look to reorganize, and then this lift and, and everything that we have going forward, we address that in, you know, further on in the meeting. I also have to be honest, I've been sitting as Vice Chair for the last year, hoping, you know, with the intention that I would be nominated, nominated as Chair. I don't know if somebody else is sitting at this table that feels the same way, or has desire, but I think, I appreciate that you're saying this, and I think it's really important, but I think the pressure to put on someone to come up with some kind of speech or, or anything like that, it's really tough at the 11th hour, and I really, I don't feel comfortable putting anyone else on the spot. If you want to hear from me why I'd love to be considered as Chair, then that's fine, and that's a conversation we could have outside of a meeting as well. But again, I just think that that's, you know.
So, I appreciate you stating your interest. I guess I would put it out to the rest of the committee. Is there anyone else on the committee that is interested in filling the role of Chair?
I'm ish. I mean, I would, but I'm heartened that Zaladani wants to do it. I would be happy to put my name in his chair if that were interest, but, or Vice Chair. I think I had mentioned, sorry, in our last summer meeting, there's a few things I was hoping to see the committee do. And I mean the committee, not necessarily Chair. Specifically, two things. One, coming up with a regular policy audit and review cycle. We have that, and now it comes kind of ad hoc through the state, MASC, and as things come up, I just think that would be in the long-term interest of the committee. Two would be, as I alluded to, reflecting on when I was a new member, having a document. Doesn't need to be a handbook, doesn't need to be big, but just have the committee, have anyone who was interested in the committee review and compile a kind of a welcome document that kind of fills in the gaps between what MASC says and things like that, and kind of the way that the board wants to function. I just think that would be nice. I felt that my years on AdCom, too, frankly, that that would have been, would have been helpful, even if it's not much info. That's something I was, I'm very interested in seeing the committee pursue, and understanding that that may not be the wish of members of the committee to do a lot of that type of work, that would be my only primary reasons for saying, hey, yeah, sure, I could do the Chair, knowing that as a committee member, regardless of my role is, I'd really like to see the committee push those things forward. So, those are my primary reasons for saying, yeah, sure, I'd be interested in being Chair, but it's with the understanding that it would be unfair of me to ask for other committee members to do something, do, or be involved in initiatives like that, at least in terms of the legwork, if I wasn't willing to do it myself, so.
Well, we are a party of five, and those sound like good ideas, so I think that everybody sitting at the table is looking to collaborate and afford momentum, I would hope, so.
So, and I just want to make, so, the perception has been that the presumptive, or the presumptive Chair is the Vice Chair. That has not necessarily been the reality. We do know in recent history that, you know, we did have one member serving as Vice Chair three times before they moved into Chairperson's role. The year that I was the Chairperson, Mr. Pearson had been the Chairperson the year before. He and I had a very honest conversation about what he wanted, and what my plans were, and why I was interested in being the Chair, and he then understood that and appreciated that, and decided not to pursue the role. So, this is not about, I, I think it's dangerous to the committee and to the future of the committee if we just always assume that the person that has been sitting in the role of Vice Chair is interested in the role of Chair, or is really the right person to be performing that role, knowing what is coming ahead, and that is not about you, that is not about Brent, is not about if Michelle was interested, if Nathan was interested. It is a, I think it is dangerous to just assume for the committee and the community that the person that is the Vice Chair automatically becomes the Chair the next year.
Sure.
And that's what I'm trying to call attention to.
Perfect. I just want to, for full disclosure to everybody here, I did have a discussion, and I did enter into the role of Vice Chair with the goal of trying to learn and get to a point where I could feel comfortable being Chair, and I feel like I'm there. I didn't expect this, but it's okay. I do appreciate honesty and transparency. So, I guess at this point, you know, if anyone's, if we're comfortable, because it's not, I mean, it's the five people sitting here, so if everyone's comfortable with where we're at, I guess I'm going to look for nominations so that we can move on to Vice Chair, if that's fair.
I'd like to nominate Sarah to be the Chair.
A second. Any further discussion?
So, I would actually nominate Brent.
Any discussion on that nomination? Okay. There is a second right now for Sarah Ladani, so I believe the next order of business is to vote on the Chair. So, I guess we'd say all in favor of Sarah Ladani.
It's a roll call vote.
It is a roll call vote, so I will start at the end. Brent Ruder. That was an aye. Michelle Thaxton?
Yes.
Aye.
Nathan Irman?
Aye.
Rob Canfield?
Sure.
Sarah Ladani? Aye. So, that would be five in favor, zero against. Thank you very much. And now, I'd like to have a discussion about the role of Vice Chair, and again, thank you, Rob, for bringing that up in full transparency, as it has been in the past. People who take on this role, which I just read what Vice Chairs are, typically do do it with the mindset of learning the Chair and possibly, you know, taking on that role come next year. Again, we don't know what the future will bring, but keeping that in mind, are there any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Michelle for Vice Chair.
I'd like to do it.
I'd nominate Brent.
Okay. So, we have one nomination for.
Second, Michelle.
Wait, what? Okay, so right now, the nomination is for Michelle. Any discussion, there was a nomination for Brent. At this point, I have a second for Michelle from Brent. So, at this point, I guess, I guess at this point, we should push a vote for Michelle. All in favor?
Wait, 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 no, I just.
We could, this is, you, we have discussion before we vote, so we can discuss.
Yeah. If you want it, I have one more year, so I could be Vice Chair next year.
The, the thing that compels me to say, well, you already heard why I say that I would put my name out to do either of them, that, the, and this is something for folks to discuss and refute, because this is discussion, the part of the discussion. With the teacher, or with the contracts coming up, it's something I've done a lot, and I imagine, I mean, you all have lots of other experiences outside of education, and my enjoyment completely aside, and time completely aside, I feel like it would be, I feel like I'd be well-placed to be on, on that committee, and if, if it's, if it's the practice to put the Chair and the Vice Chair on, on, on that particular negotiation team, then that's the only reason I put my name forward, just because I've done a lot with teacher negotiations on, from three different sides. So, that's the only reason, and I think you'd do a fantastic job as well. But that's the only reason I put my name out there. That's all.
Okay.
What are you thinking? This is where we discuss.
Is it definite that on the teacher discussion, it is the Chair and Vice Chair that go on that discussion? Those are the two members that go forward?
Usually just the Chair.
No.
Just the Chair.
Just the Chair.
Okay. So. We have two members that are on the team.
Yes, but it can be, like Brent can be.
So, it isn't necessarily the Vice Chair that goes forward on that?
I honestly can't.
Great, it just happened to be last time.
It happened to be the last time, and I can't recall six years ago, so.
Great information.
Okay.
That's great information.
So, even though you're Chair, you could end up not being the one that ends up going forward? I mean, if you were Vice Chair.
Yes.
Noted.
Okay, so.
No, thank you, that's a good point of information.
So, that's, that's where I'm trying to get, gain the clarification. So, there, you're saying there's two people, two people on the teacher's negotiation, and then two people on the teacher's assistant.
Educational assistance.
And then after all the other projects, the, I mean, all the other contracts, typically we do not have a member that goes on?
You don't have a member that's sitting in on all of those meetings.
Okay, but those are just the two.
Correct. It is still the contract with the school committee, and then we would end up having executive session over contract, as it.
I was, I was a representative in one of them.
For the educational assistance.
For the educational assistance, and I was not either Chair or Vice Chair, so I do know it's arbitrary. All right. This is extremely convoluted, so I'm gonna, I'm just gonna back up. The first nomination was for Michelle. It was seconded, then there was a nomination for Brent. So, I, I think I need a little guidance here.
You actually don't need a second for the nominations, you can go forward with a roll call vote for the two. I think my concern is just what I heard, and this, we've all said this, so this is not a direct criticism, anybody said it, but the approach of, I have one more year, so you should do it, is what I'm trying to avoid. I understand and I appreciate it, I think it's collaborative. I think I probably said it. It's, so I, I understand why we say it, but I think it takes away from the seriousness and the responsibility of the two positions to take that approach. I think we need to be intentional about why we fill these roles, and what we expect of the people filling them. And it's not, this is not, this is not a criticism of my faith in you, Michelle, or my faith in you, Brent, just like it was not a criticism of my faith in you as the Chair. It is about us being intentional, and about us not just assuming a process because we want to get along with each other. It is about what is right for our committee, what is right for our schools, and what is right for our community.
I agree.
So, if we're interested in doing it, I'd like us to say why we're interested in doing it, rather than, I want to learn how to be Chair, so I was the Vice Chair.
As that, as much as I appreciate that is your opinion, that's not necessarily the, that does not have to be the exact practice. I don't want to get to a point where we put people on the spot. So, I do appreciate that, and I appreciate, Brent, you sharing that. Michelle has been on this committee for a year. Nathan's the only new face on the committee. I feel like we've worked well together, and I feel like we're going to be able to work well together going forward. So, I think this discussion has been really positive, and I do appreciate you bringing up two points, and you actually have brought up those points in the past, and I'm glad you revisited them, because it's really, that's really nice. And that would have been great to have a welcome packet sort of thing for somebody new on the committee. So, I think that's a great idea, and something we should definitely pursue. I am, I, I guess I'm just gonna, I don't think we need to do a roll call on the Vice Chair, but we can, at this point, do a roll call on the Vice Chair, since Michelle.
It is, it actually, if you read the policy, it is the same procedure for the election of the Vice Chair.
We'll do a roll call on the Vice Chair. I guess it would be first, since she was nominated first, we do Michelle Thaxton.
It's a roll call vote, so we would just go down and.
Vote.
Right, vote.
Is that what, is that what?
Yes.
All right.
So, instead of who's in favor, it's a, we each get one vote.
So, Rob Canfield.
So, it's a roll call vote.
Rob Canfield.
I would say Brent.
Okay. Nathan Irman?
Michelle.
Sarah Ladani? Michelle Thaxton?
Michelle.
Michelle Thaxton?
Michelle.
Brent Ruder?
What? No, so we have three, one, one.
Thank you very much. And so now, the Vice Chair of the Foxborough School Committee will be Michelle Thaxton. Thank you very much, and I appreciate the clarification on the roles. As we move forward, we're going to work together as a team, party five, all right?
Sure.
For sure, working together and make sure we all hit the high notes.
But I definitely would like to revisit, like, who sits on the.
Absolutely.
And not make assumptions about that, because if you feel strongly about that, I would like to sit on a committee, but I, it doesn't have to be that one.
To your point.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we're over time.
We are.
So, I'm going to get to open public comment, because we are going to talk about the policy, budget, and Recreation Department appointments further on in the agenda.
That's fine.
So, we'll get back to that conversation. Right now, open public comment. Right now, I believe we have none, so we're going to go right into the approval of minutes. Any discussion on the minutes, or any correction on the minutes included in the packet?
I motion to approve the minutes from the April 30th meeting as presented.
A second. Okay. Any, any further discussion?
No.
No? All right. All in favor? All opposed? And any abstaining? Nate was not here, he's going to abstain from that. Okay. Next.
401.
Excuse me?
401, right?
401, yes, on that one.
Thank you, sir.
Next, we're going to go right into the Superintendent's update.
So, I would like to say thank you to all of you for being there late last night at town meeting, and thank you to the community. It's the.
It's the largest audience that I've seen since I've been here, with the auditorium being completely full for town meeting, and very thankful to the community for passing our budget and the budget that you put forward for us and all the work that went into that. So very grateful to the town and to the school committee for that. I'd also like to thank our PTOs, our PAC, all our parent volunteers, for the high school, for Teacher Appreciation Week, and all the generous support and goodies and lunches and everything that was done for our teachers. It was just, it was really well-appreciated, and it just shows that the volunteers that we have at all levels, and I know at the high school, that's not something that we really had seen until year, last year, actually, and I think maybe...
We did have a COVID interruption too, Dr. Burdo, so we'll say that.
We had some parents that, that then grabbed some other parents together, and it was just, it was wonderful, and it was really appreciated, and our, our teachers and our staff, they work so hard every single day for our students, and we just are very thankful and grateful for that. So thank you for all that did that, and I know Burl does theirs a little bit later, so that's still to come, and they're very excited about that, too. Had our parent leader meeting this morning and got to hear a little bit of what will be taking place, so it's always exciting. I attended the musical Saturday night, Seuss School Junior at the middle school, and I just, I have to take a moment and say that you don't even realize they're middle schoolers.
Yeah.
Their stage presence and all of the work, all the parent volunteers, and under Scott Walker, and everybody that helped from choreography to music to everything, it was just outstanding. It was, it was a real treat, so great performances. And then just some upcoming events, I know at the last meeting, I had reminded people to look at calendars, please look at calendars, there's, there's a lot that's going on again this week. We'll be next week even hosting our Special Olympics Field Day on Monday, weather permitting. We will send out a message to families, if that's going to change, and to faculty and staff, too, if we need to go to our rain date. This weekend, we also have the Street Painting Festival with the art department that takes place up at Gillette, that's on Saturday with the rain date on Sunday, so we're watching the weather to see if we need to go to the rain date. That's from 9:00 to 6:00 at Gillette, and the chalk murals and things that they paint on the squares up there show the talent of our kids that they have and other that engage in that. And then our next parent academy is supporting positive mental health for kids and caregivers, and that's taking place on Thursday, the 23rd. And that is being brought to you by our wellness committee, and that's from 6:30 to 8:00. Again, it's on the calendar, please check the calendar and, you know, newsletters that are going out. The principals work really hard to communicate a lot of these things, and you can always go back and revisit them. So whether you're going to the Spring Chamber concert on the 23rd, or you're the positive, you know, mental health for caregivers, we also know that it is a busy time of year, and there are going to be some double bookings. We just can't help that. But that's a good problem to have where you have choices. And the last thing is, we've got art shows that have gone on, that are continuing to go on. I know at the middle school, they really tried to coordinate with the concerts, with them going before the art show, so that way you can get kind of a twofer, if you will. So again, check your calendars, a lot of hard work by parent volunteers, by our teachers and staff to put these things on, and for our principals that are leading all this within the building, so lots to choose from.
Awesome. Thank you for all the work that went into that. It's amazing. Okay, so now we've got a student update by our, we're gonna change hats here, Nathan Irman. Would you like to give us an update?
Sure.
From a student's perspective?
So grade 10 has MCAS next Tuesday, May 21st and 22nd. Senior final exams are next week. The junior prom is this Saturday, May 18th. The senior black and white dance is next, or a couple weeks from now, May 28th, and the seniors' last day is Friday, which means the seniors have three days left.
Amazing.
Anything happening at the middle or elementary level?
I don't know, we don't have a middle or elementary representative, but Dr. Burdo said, "Check your calendars at those levels."
They have lots of different field trips that are taking place at the elementary level. Those two are on the calendar, too many to mention.
Yeah.
Also, we've got kindergarten screening that's going on right now, so that's taking place. And on that note, if you have neighbors or friends that seem like they have a five-year-old by August 31st and they haven't registered for kindergartens, please encourage them to register for kindergarten.
And the men, register.
Thank you.
That sneaks up on you when you go from babies to kindergarteners.
I, I would, just as a side note, I think as we move forward with the student committee, if we're gonna do updates, it would be important to represent students from across the district versus just the high school. Please.
Okay, that's noted.
Not necessarily represented, but in that student's report is what I think we should do.
Noted, thank you. Okay, so we're gonna move right along to the Foxborough High School Guidance Services Update. This is always a really important, really information-rich presentation, so Mr. Savidio, welcome, thank you for being here, and thank you for all the work...
Thank you.
...you have put into this. Yes, thank you.
So there's a, there's a lot here, and when we look at the guidance services, it's kind of, Dr. Donovan and I, our, our high school principal, we were kind of talking about how to kind of organize that, I talked with Dr. Burdo as well, there's so much here. So we kind of looked at like four basic buckets of how things fall in. And then from there, streamlining that down to kind of the focus area. So I'm gonna focus on a few things tonight in each of the sections. So we're gonna talk about transition, so there's some eighth to ninth grade transition, our group guidance classes and scheduling, student services, accommodation plans, student support team, and our bridge program. Parent education, which is really for, we see the students every day, we don't see the parents every day. So what can we do for parents? What are we doing for parents to help them understand what we offer at the high school? So our evening presentations and our newsletter. And then in the college career section, we did have our credit fair this year, we had our career day, scholarships, college rep visits, and then field trips. So I'm gonna touch on each one of those, some will be a little faster than others. So we look at transition from middle school to high school. It's a pretty big jump for every student going from middle school to high school. When, when students get to the high school level, they're now potentially in mixed classes, so they could have an elective that has sophomores, juniors, and seniors in it as well. Their lunches are mixed, there's, there's a lot of change. We want students to understand when they're coming to the high school that they're going up one level, and that, and that's the good, a good thing. When they're in elementary, going to middle, they should be going up a level, middle to high, they should be going up a level, and then after high school, same thing, that you should be growing each time. But we don't want students to come in feeling completely lost. So we, we start along the way, and then we're talking about the beginning of the year, we have a seventh and eighth grade open house to, to say to students and parents, "Hey, if you're thinking about going somewhere else, come to Foxborough High School." Like, we, we offer a ton here, this is what we offer for our freshmen, our sophomores, our juniors, our seniors, athletic opportunities, clubs, different academic opportunities, so students understand that they're gonna get an amazing education, amazing experience at Foxborough High School. And in November, we worked with our freshmen, with our group guidance program, transition them into high school, saying, "Hey, you know, like, this is what middle school was like, this is what high school is like, some similarities, but there's also some differences, this is what you need to know, this is what a transcript looks like, this is gonna carry with you for four years, and then when you get out of high school, if you're planning to go into college, you're gonna need that, that transcript." So we, we try to work with students adjusting that way. And then as we go through the rest of the year, we're working with the middle school guidance counselors and middle school teachers about course selection and recommendations. We meet with the middle school students for their, their recommendations and their, their schedule as well. We'll have our move-up day in June, which is great, so the middle school students come up for half a day, and they get to see the high school, they get to see kind of in action, they go on a tour, they hear from admin, they hear from guidance, hear from students. And then over the summer, we have our link crew orientation, which is similar to web, which is the middle school has, so the students are at least somewhat familiar with the process, but it's, it's student leaders, it's juniors and seniors nominated by the faculty as potential leaders, and they kind of take those students under their wing and adjust them to the high school. So there's a lot we do to get the students into high school, and then the next phase is kind of figuring out how to help them get out of high school and where they want to go. So when we look at sophomores, juniors, and seniors, it's really about transitioning out of high school, supporting them in the moment, but keeping that eye down the line to say, "You're gonna be there in a couple years, you better start figuring out what you want to do, where you want to go, how you want to be, all that." We don't expect a 13, 14, 15, 16, 17-year-old to know their career. Like, that's not, I think, always realistic. We want students to at least start thinking about it, get kind of the, the gears turned in the head, "What do I like? What am I not so good at? What do I, am I a morning person? Am I, am I a late, night owl? Like, what do I like to do? Who am, who am I? Do I like working with people? Do I like not working with people?" And those are ways to kind of figure out potential jobs and skills. So our Naviance program, which is amazing, especially for senior year, that's when seniors are really using Naviance more so, they have a new, they've updated their, their career exploration program, it's like a cluster finder, and students go through, they answer like 100 questions, it's pretty quick, though, and it breaks down the strengths and weaknesses, and then potential careers, and what they might be interested in. And so we, we had a lesson for our sophomores and walked them through that whole process, we had them log in, we had them take it, we talked to them about their, their different potential top paths, clustered students together, they kind of sound some things out together. So the next step is really saying like, "Okay, here's what you're potentially interested in, are you, is this something really kind of stand out?" And some kids are like, "Yeah, this is really what I want to do." So you can click on that major, on that, in the career, and it shows you the list of majors, and then all the colleges that offer that major. So it's a, it's a good tool for students to really start diving in. Naviance is great, it's kind of overwhelming, so we don't want students starting, you know, September 1st of their senior year, it's, it's a lot to do at that point, so chip away a little at a time. And then when we get into junior year, we're looking at the, the junior timeline and what they need to do if they're planning on going to college, and PSAT score interpretation, registering for standardized tests, all that stuff to get them prepared. And then senior year is a lot of, it's really about common application in the college process, but it's also about anyone who's not interested in college, trade schools, if they want to go to the military, if they want to go right to work, what can we do to help them, and what can they do, what steps are they needing to take? So that's kind of really where we're at for those transitionary pieces. Scheduling, there's a couple things here, there's kind of two areas, there's the counselor's scheduling part, and then there's like the master schedule creation, I'm gonna spend just a minute on each of those. So as the counselors, we work with our students, especially at the high school level, we, we meet with the middle school students and put them in as a group, but at the high school level, we actually have an individual conversation, students come to our office, we talk about not just next year, but the following couple years, what are their plans after high school? So every year, I, I write down like, "Oh, what are you interested in doing after high school?", just to see what they say. And sometimes it's night and day different year to year, and other times, it's the student who's graduating from high school, it's like they told me that in their freshman year of what they want to do. So I like just kind of seeing the, the progression, but we, we look at getting those requests in, having those meetings, counseling them on what they want to do, and then once the schedule's created, we figure out how to adjust it if there are conflicts and moving things around. For the master schedule creation, it's a, it's a big process, I've talked about this before to the group, so I don't want to spend a ton of time here, but there's a few things I, I do want to let you know. So it takes a lot of time, it's pretty complicated, we have a lot of singletons, which means there's only one section of that class. So we have a lot of courses, but not necessarily a bunch of sections for each of those courses. So it's great when you look at a program of studies, you see all the different offerings, it's like, it's amazing, but we also say like, "Okay, there's one period will be this class, and then this class is only offered in this period." So getting it to all fit together isn't perfect. I definitely do the best I can, but we, we try to work with our special ed department, Matt Struble, him and I sit down, we really talk about student services and needs, we have that side of things. We also, I meet with department heads for just to talk about like sections and teacher assignments and all that, and build the schedule. So there will be some sections, as we're looking at the, kind of introducing and really pushing forward our co-teaching model, that will have some sections with some lower numbers than we typically would have, but it's for the student services and the support that we're, we're trying to provide for those students. And then we did, a couple months ago when we were here, it was myself and some of the other department heads, we talked about some of the new courses, and Fairy Tales, Myths, and Legends will be running, it's a new course that was approved by a school committee, and it is running. Our Intra-Introduction to Engineering Design is also running, and then Environmental Sustainability, Environmental Change, although we've had those courses in the past, it's Project Lead the Way now, so the curriculum is changing. Those are all approved, they're all running, we're, we're psyched to offer them for next year. 504s, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on 504s or DCAPs, but really what it is, if a student has a disability and they're not necessarily eligible for an IEP, and the disability could be a variety of different, different things, we write a plan for them to help them access the curriculum. DCAP, similarly, student may or may not qualify for an IEP or a 504, we might even get to that, that process, we might just say like, "The student just needs an extra accommodation or two, they might just need extra time, they just need to sit up front." We don't necessarily have to write a 504 for something like that, so we have our district accommodation plans. It was structured in a way where there's different kind of areas for accommodations, so assessments, instruction, organization, behavior, and social-emotional needs. Teachers can look and say like, "I tried this, I tried this, I tried this," and when we figure out what works with the students, that plan carries with the students throughout their high school career. It's available through guidance, we send it to the teachers to make sure they're giving the students what they need. Our student support team, this is something we do quite often, every Thursday, we meet. On paper, it's an hour, it's not necessarily an hour, it's usually like an hour and a half to two hours, but it's our two assistant principals, the entire guidance department, our social worker, we have other people kind of come in and out, sometimes it's our school nurse, our special ed department head, Metco coordinator, so we have a lot of kind of heads in the room, and we say like, "All right, here's what's going on for students A, B, and C, what can we do to help?" And there's also, here are general themes we're seeing with students, what can we do to help address that? So sometimes it's direct, here's a specific student who's struggling, what do we do? And other times, it's really, here's just some stuff that's kind of percolating behaviors, and how can we help teachers address that in the classroom? Our bridge program is really designed for students, if they're out of school for an extended period of time, and that could be for a variety of reasons, a student could have mono, they could have had a surgery, they could have had a hospitalization, and they're coming back, and to say, "Here's your work, go do it," is a lot. So we have a, a person in our bridge program who's our academic coordinator, and then we also have our social worker attached to the bridge program for any social-emotional needs. And that academic coordinator works with the teachers and figures out what assignments are due and when they're due, and timelines and deadlines, and it helps the students adjust back into the high school without that added pressure of, "I have three weeks' worth of work, how do I catch up?" And we, we're pretty proud of that process, we've been trying to get that going for quite a while, and it, it started more so last year, and this year, it's kind of, it's definitely solidified into a better product. So for parent education, I want to talk about Bruce Hamilton, he's our, our college counselor, he's awesome, and he pretty much does the guidance section of the newsletter every week. He probably does like at least 90% of it. He, he's an amazing guy, he's so thorough, he gives so much information to Dr. Donovan to put in the newsletter. It was actually to a point where there was so much that it was, things were almost getting lost, that we had, had to create like an extra section in our guidance, on our guidance website for all of the updates. So we still have stuff going in the newsletter, but for parents who want to know what's coming up, check out Dr. Donovan's newsletter, it's amazing for a variety of reasons, but in the guidance section, there's college visits and, you know, field trips and things that either are coming up or things that just happened, and he, he talks about all the positives that, that we're doing as a department. It's great. So our evening presentations, I'm gonna kind of zip through these, we have presentations to start the year for seniors, and it's really about, a little bit about the college process, but it's really more about financial aid and what parents need to do to understand that process. Obviously, this year's financial aid was delayed, so it was, it was a tricky year for that, but the, the process is generally the same, the dates and deadlines were a little different in the beginning, but we had that going, and then we meet with junior parents in October. We want to have junior parents understand this is the timeline. You have all of junior year to really start working on things. If, if a student's a little behind, no big deal. We, like I said earlier, we don't want students to start at the beginning of their senior year. They want to chip away a little at a time. We do have our seventh and eighth grade open house, which I alluded to earlier. Program of studies is all about course selection. We have two presentations, ones for incoming freshman parents and the others for our upperclassmen. Cause they're definitely, there's some similarities, but there's definitely differences between the two. AP potential night is the same night as our program of studies. Uh, we just have it opposite times. And that's for anyone who potentially isn't thinking about taking an AP course. And they hear from department heads, they hear from a couple of our guidance counselors who are AP coordinators. And a college rep and some students saying, this is why you should take an AP and here's what to watch out for. If you're a student who's like, I'm on the fence, maybe one's enough where student B might say, I can do three. Then you might have a student who does six, which is a lot, but it does happen. Our college panel night is great. Uh, actually Nate was there that night as our student rep, which was awesome. So he talked about his, uh, kind of college application process and what to watch out for, for students, for parents when they're going into it. So we had, we had two student reps and we had some representatives from colleges to talk about the whole, the whole process. So it's, it's a good night for sophomores and juniors as they're about to start, uh, going into the, the crazy year of senior year. So our college and career services, we have two specialized people in our guidance department. We have Hannah LeBeau, who's our school to career, and we have Bruce Hamilton, who is our college counselor. And their jobs are similar and different at the same time. They work together and they work with students for post-secondary planning. Uh, sometimes they'll, they'll go on field trips together, but at the same time they have defined roles. So we did go to the, the national college fair this year in Boston and there's like over 200 colleges. It was great. The, the drawback was we could only get one bus. We can only bring 42 students. We had 45, we had a couple of students who were, who were sick. In previous years, we've been able to take the whole junior class, but just at that time in the morning, it's just not feasible to get a fleet of buses to bring the whole junior class. They've changed the timing of it. So it ends at noon. It used to end a little bit later. So by the time we got there, we had like an hour and a half of college time. Uh, but if we were to leave after nine, we wouldn't even be able to really make it worth it for students. But we were happy that we were able to do it. It's the first time we've done it since 2019. Uh, the COVID kind of threw a wrench into field trips and all that. So we're happy to, to try it again. We do have other college fairs that are around. So Bruce Hamilton and I have been talking about like what other ones are there? Are they similar? Could we maybe do that one instead? We can do that in addition. So these are things that we're going to be working on as we, as we progress into next year. College rep visits, this is another kudos to Bruce. He's, he's great and he, uh, he makes so many connections. He's, he's been doing this a long time. So he knows a lot of people. And we've had over 50 college reps come to Foxborough High School to meet with students after school this year. And one of the reasons that's amazing for students is the, the rep who's there is almost always the rep who's going to be reading their application. So we had a, and this happens more than this one instance, but there was an instance, uh, two years ago. It was like, no, it was last year. We had a student who applied to, wanted to apply to a school, met with this college rep and it was like, almost like an interview. It was just, it was, he was the only student and it was a back and forth with this rep. Student was a good student, a lot of reasons that he got in, but it was that FaceTime. It wasn't just the name. It wasn't just the transcript. It was the FaceTime and that back and forth that really made that, you know, the scales kind of tip in his favor. So we really encourage students to meet with the reps after school. We know students are super busy. Sectionals and clubs and work and sports is a lot to do, but even if it's a 20 minutes, half hour, just to kind of meet and see what's going on. We do think it's a, a great resource for students. Career day, we did that this year. We haven't done that since 2019 either. So we had, uh, juniors and seniors, they picked their top six careers. Pretty much everyone got their top three and it was 45 minute sessions. They went through everything and got to hear from people in the field, which was helpful. So again, we're always looking to tweak it. So we have some feedback for next time. Credit fair, I'm going to zip through this. This changed from the old days of like having a bunch of booths walking around to it was virtual and we only had a couple of booths that students had to go to, like the life skills booth. You had to like learn how to tie a tie and dress an envelope and things like that. So just skills that students need to know. And it was, it was a success. But again, like always, we're looking at things like, how can we make it better? And we have ideas for next time as well. So I'm not going to spend really much time on the scholarships. We do have our scholarship night in two weeks, which is the 29th, Wednesday, the 29th. But I just, I, I'm here and I have to just thank the community for their generosity. We have so many students who are fortunate and benefiting from the scholarships every year. And in a couple of weeks, it's, it's a good moment for us to really go through and have those students attend scholarship night and read their name. And they don't know what scholarship they're getting until they're there. And it's an exciting time. So I just want to say thank you to all our, our scholarship committees, uh, and the generosity that they, they give to our Foxborough High School students. So that's, that's a lot of information really fast. There's more in it, but those are the, the focus areas. So I know it's a ton of information. What questions do you have for me?
First of all, thank you so much for all the content that you gave us.
So this is a, this is our standard presentation. So thank you. I want to get a little bit more, let's take it up a step or back a step. What are the strengths of the guidance department?
Yeah, it's a great question. So I think there's, we have two, I think key strengths. I think first, we're student oriented, student centered. So I think we do a variety of, whether it's activities or interactions that are direct with students and indirect with students. I do think that there's, there's a lot of times that we're doing stuff that may not be student facing, but it's student supporting. So I think that we all play the same role. We all have the same basic role. Mine's a little bit different, but, uh, we all play the same role. We all have our, our own kind of unique strengths. And I think together we work really well as a team. And I think that, that kind of plays that, that other strength of, we have some kind of new faces in our department over the past year, and then we have some people who have been there for a while. And I think the combination of this is what we do in Foxborough and the culture of Foxborough. And here's some new ideas. Why are we doing it this way? Blending together to kind of move us forward has been, has been great. And I think even being in, at Foxborough High School, this is my 17th year. It's been a long time. And spending 12 in guidance and three in administration, then back to guidance in a different role. I've been able to kind of take the bits and pieces of what I've learned in the building and say like, why are we doing this? We, it worked then. It doesn't actually work now. What can we, what can we do to move forward? And I think we're really collaborative. I think we understand why we're, we're here. We're not just there to check the box. We understand each student has one crack at high school. Let's make it the best experience possible for them. And you know, some students we see all the time and other students we see a little less often, but we're there to support everyone. And some are seeking us out, some are calling down. I think it's just the variety of, of working together and, and working for the students that I think makes us strong.
Thank you. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I got, I have several.
Oh, that's fine.
I appreciate that. So what I want you to consider doing after this is getting a copy of this tape from Foxborough Cable. Getting this snippet and playing it or making it available on the school's website to describe what guidance does. Because I think one of the challenges many of us have, we bring up from our own high school experiences or from our children's, our children's high school experiences. What our idea of what a high performing guidance office is, but that could be different than what your idea or what Foxborough's idea of a high performing guidance office is or does, right? So this is taking all of that and putting it into a message so that again, you can share what it is you're trying to accomplish and how you measure success. So that's one just request. Um, the second one, so you've given us strengths. What are your biggest opportunities? And I'm going to ask you, the second part of that question is we know that change is hard, right? We know that we live in a community that doesn't always embrace change as easily as other places do, right? So if I was to ask you, what does innovation really look like for a guidance office? If you were in a vacuum and not having the paradigm and being in Foxborough, all the good and the bad of, of, of that paradigm, right? But if you could be truly innovative and say, what do, what is a, what is a truly high performing, high efficiency, goal meeting, student success focused guidance office look like? What would that be to you?
So I, I think there's a, there's a lot of factors to it. I do think that part of it is finding ways to be as proactive as possible and understanding that we have a, a specific structure and a schedule, like our, our bell schedule in the school and constraints. And we, we can work within those constraints. And sometimes that can be problematic to what we really want to do, just based on the time, like time is like one of the biggest factors. But I think there are ways we can look to say, how can, how can we take the structure we have and not necessarily do things better or worse, just differently to, to be more efficient. And I think over the past year, we've taken some of, taken a look at some of what we've done and said like, this isn't as efficient as we want it to be. So I think looking a way to be as, as student centered and student, student facing as we possibly can and being proactive. I think that's the biggest thing. I think in general, I think we do a pretty good job at that, but I, I do think there's always room for improvement. I definitely think there are ways we can get out to students more, get out to parents more than we do. Not to say, again, not to say that we don't, like, we're definitely doing it, but we can always be better.
Okay. If you were to look at the past year, thank you for that. Uh, I want to keep challenging you to be innovative. Um, and if we as a school committee through the administration and through the building leadership can help support that innovation, then I will speak for myself, but hopefully speak to the rest of the community and say, we would welcome any chance to learn how we can support that more. If you were to grade yourself or the, the department over the past year, what would, or look at your, let's not do letter grades. Let's do capability, right? So where are you on performance scale? What would you give yourselves?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know.
Cause we're trying to get that with our kids in middle school, right? So let's do the, and I've, I'm drawing a blank on what, on what we're moving to the, the. Thank you. Standards based.
I guess it depends on what we're talking about. Is it?
I'm asking you. You get to pick your standard.
General? I, I, I don't know. I don't know. I guess it, I think, I think I'm, I'm trying to think of like us overall. I don't know. That's, that's a really good question. I don't know how to really answer that. I don't know. I, I feel like for me, I'm, we actually had a conversation with a parent about this kind of recently about like standards based versus grading. I grew up in grading, like here's a letter grade. That's, that's how my brain works. That's how I think. So changing it to a standards base, I understand it. I understand the merits of it, but my default is a letter grade.
Of course.
You know?
That's why Dr. Burrow smiled when I, when I said it. Um, cause I had, I, you know, brand to prompt me, but, um, so certainly you know that, I mean, I think this, I say this every time you hear, right? Clearly the Canfield family is a huge fan of yours, right? And we're very appreciative of all the work personally that the, that guidance department and all that stuff. But, but I would challenge you for this report next year to come back and report to the committee using a standards based approach. This is great information. Um, it's appreciated. It's the numbers that everybody wants. It's the things that we should publish. Again, this could be a great ad. But I would really love to hear from you as the leader of that department. How do you rate your performance? What are your strengths? What are your opportunities? And what does innovation look like for you? So thank you for, thank you for indulging me.
Yeah, no, no problem. Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to the entire guidance department. Without you guys, I'm not sure I would have made it through high school. But, um, secondly, I've heard from a number of students that they really enjoyed the college fair. So just to clarify, is that going to keep going on next year and years after?
Yeah. So, uh, with Mr. Hamilton, there's, uh, there's one in Bridgewater. And we want to see if the one in Bridgewater has the same, almost kind of like bang for your buck. If we can get almost as many colleges and still, and be able to have more time. So if that's the case, we might move to that one, but we're still looking to do call, like a bigger college fair. Whether it's the one in Boston or at Bridgewater State, it just depends on, uh, what college is there. But yeah, it's definitely something we want to continue in the future.
Brent, did you hear me? Michelle?
Yes. Uh, is, I have a question about, was the PSATs always done at the junior level or did it used to be at the sophomore level?
We had the PSATs for both sophomores and juniors.
Sure.
A long time ago. And then it was at PSATs for juniors and the, the PACTs for sophomores. We got rid of the PACTs because we don't really have any students take the ACTs anymore. I mean, we always, always had a low number, but I think last year we had six students take it. So it wasn't worth it for, for that. So we, we have it just for the one grade for, for junior year. Cause that's the national merit scholarship year. That's like the, the, the big one.
Right. And then I had another question. The decap, is that something that's fairly recent? Is that new or is that something that was always in place? I, I'm like unaware of decap. This is.
Yeah, no, it's, it's been an evolving process for, for quite a while, um, several years. We, we had, there was a committee handful of years ago, maybe five, six years ago where, uh, it was saying like, here's what we have as a decap, like our district accommodation plan and formalizing it more so. So in the past, there's, there's been a, decaps in all the levels, elementary, middle and high. But we wanted to take like a, a district view to say, how do we formalize it? And obviously it's going to look a little different from each level as we go, but the idea of here are some basic things you can try. And here's what we'll carry with the student going forward. Uh, so I would say it's been probably more formalized in the past couple of years, like through COVID. It kind of was there and then it really kind of solidified as we kind of came out of COVID, especially with all the, the needs for students.
Okay. So. When, just to interject, just, uh, just for a second, when we talk about, uh, the decap and other contexts outside of the high school guidance department, we're often talking about multi-tiered systems of support. So, so, uh, that's part of the way that we track the tier two, the tier three interventions. So that's actually what Mr. Servideo is referring to. At the high school level, our guidance counselors are keeping track of what are those interventions that we're using? Uh, because they have that view across multiple courses. So they know what works for this particular student and, 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 um, where, where have they been successful and they're keeping track of that information. But the district curriculum accommodation plan is something that's very much infused into our, our approach to MTSS. So we're, we're familiar with it across, um, all levels. We revised it recently as part of our participation in the inclusive instruction, uh, academy. So that's part of that work that Mr. Servideo is referring to.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, I had a student that came through prior to the pandemic, prior to COVID and at the end COVID, and one that's coming through after. Mr. Canfield asked about your grades. I can tell you, you're on an upward trajectory. I definitely do see a large difference between the guidance department that my first child had, my first student had, and the, the one that my second student has. And it's a huge difference. You are definitely on an upward trajectory.
Thank you. Thank you.
True story. Yeah.
Following up on what Rob had said, I think I just want to underscore then I've, people have heard me say this a lot, but it, it does bear repeating. I love Foxborough Public Schools becau, for many reasons. One of them that I'm citing right now, and people have heard me say it before, is that I perceive there to be a high degree of trust between administration and the, you know, department head such as yourself. And that at least what I know of coming from the admin, um, all along has been use the data, give us ideas, prove what you want to do and then go get it and they will support you. And knowing that you have, and I hope you feel that you have that, uh, well of, 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 of trust, uh, you know, in you and your efforts. And so that's why I liked, uh, one of the things, uh, Rob was saying, go ahead and use letter grades. My brain works that way too. But like, I, um, as you look, if you look at like what a modern guidance office has to do, there's, I, I was trying to break it up as you were talking, but like I was, I was somewhere between four and eight different like pillars of the, of what you and your team have to do. And so it might be interesting or informative for you as, 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 as the lead is to go through that discussion and just look at it by, look at it by, you know, how are we doing with our counseling, uh, and aspect of things? How about career stuff? How about college stuff? And, and you know, you and your people will have those ideas. Along those lines, I'm just curious, um, as you look at all these different hats that you and your, your team have to wear. What's, is there, can you, can you estimate like an average breakdown between the amount of hours in the day or human? You know, I mean, in terms of how much effort or in the pie chart of their lives, like how much of their effort has to go to these different aspects?
I think.
And this is just more from my information. So I'm not fishing for anything here. I was just mostly just trying to understand like in a given day, cause they do everything, right?
Right.
You do everything.
And I think it, it kind of ebbs and flows. So there's some days that are much heavier on maybe like a, like social emotional leads for students. There's, there's other days that are heavier on more like, just like, like the admin type stuff, like.
Schedule.
Yeah. Or, or you getting into classes or trying to run some groups. Like it just depends on the days. Uh, I think what's interesting, I always have like have a student come in like, are you busy? I'm like, I'm always busy. Yes. What, what do you need? And you look and it's like, you look at my desk and there's like, there's a schedule, like a student schedule here. There's the master schedule there. I have all this stuff all over the place. And it's a bunch of different things. And mine's the same as every other office in, in the guidance area. We're just juggling everything. So I, I don't, there's, I think there's a way to really quantify it just because it changes so often. I, I do think that we all have things that we naturally are either better at or that we like. So I think we probably spend maybe a little more time in those areas, but we're still doing all the other stuff. So we, and I, all of us, I think are capable counselors. I think you would look at, if we were to break down like counselor by counselor, I think each one of us has a different counseling skillset and a different counseling, like personality, but we can all do it. So I think it just depends on who you're talking with in the moment, like whether or not you're, you know, you're, if you're talking to like counselor A, you're going to get the same thing as counselor B. As, as the bottom line, but the process through it will be different. So I think that sometimes changes how our day goes as far as how methodical we may be or may not be, or can we, do we have a, a bigger, tighter relationship with this student versus that student? So we can maybe get to the heart of the matter a little bit more. It really just depends. So I, I don't know how to really say this is the pie chart of all of it, but it, there's a lot of stuff in day to day. I think the, the percentages shift a little bit.
That makes sense. So thank you for endeavoring. It, it's just good to hear you talk about it. It gives me and anyone else who might care that, but, uh, you know, a flavor of it. So I'm, but thank you for indulging that. And then, um, a couple of years ago, we asked a similar question. So here comes again. And this is the whole idea of being hopeful, um, and planning ahead and in light of the fact that we just came from town meeting. Are there, um, are there things that are on your, kind of your, your wish list, even if it's many years out, the, you know, as you look ahead? And if not, that's fine. But.
Yeah. Yeah. So there's, there's two kind of, I'd say big kind of buckets. We have a, a schedule committee at the high school right now to look at how to redo our bell schedule and what we can kind of leverage with that. And one of the things that we've talked about, and we incorporated a little bit this year, was, uh, running more groups for students. And with our current bell schedule, it's very difficult to make that impactful. We can do it, but not to the impact that we really are, are hoping for. So with a different bell schedule, we're hoping that that will give us that time to make those connections with those groups. We already have the connections with the students individually, but now we can bring the. We already have the connections with the students individually, but now we can bring the groups together. So that's kind of part of, one of the things we're thinking of, like how can we, how can we take what we already do, but formalize a little bit more with time in the day where we're not pulling them out of like their math class or English class or whatever? And the other part is really just taking what we're doing and being better at it. I think sometimes there's a focus of, we need to do the newest thing. We need to have an, we have to have innovation. Like, yeah, that's all great. I love it. I love it. I want to be innovative. I want to do new things. I want to try new stuff. I also just want to be really good at what I'm doing already. So I think sometimes just like the practice of how do we get better at what we're already doing? And then incorporating new stuff is kind of what I want. I don't, I don't want to say like, all right, we're going to have all this new stuff, but we're not really good at it. I just want to be, want to be good at everything we do, which is, which is difficult. But I just think we all collectively, like the, the four counselors and Ms. LeBeau and Mr. Hamilton, and Mr. S. Miss Striuski, Ms. Peterson, who's our secretary, and then, you know, Ms. Warren, Ms. Hillary Vitell, and Mr. Cedar Shook. Like all of us together, we all play different roles. They're all similar, but they're all different. And we have to work together as a team to make us move forward. And I think, I've, I personally feel that from last year to this year, we're moving much faster. I think last year with Ms. Peterson being new, Ms. Warren being new, Ms. LeBeau being new, me being the first time in the Guidance Office, it was, as, as a department head, it was, it was like, all right, we're trying to figure, figure it out like as we go. And now I feel like we're a gelled group and we're really moving. So I really anticipate that next year, some of the kinks that we've worked out last year, that maybe some new ones are still there. We're going to work those out and we're going to be in a better spot. So I think it's just about being efficient and being better and being able to do more. I, it's that, that thing where you see like the analogies of like, well, I'm a first-year carpenter. It's going to take me an hour to do this project, where this person's been doing it for 30 years and they can do it in 15 minutes because they know what to do. And I think that's where we are. We have different skill sets and different experience levels. But I think it's about how we are functionally as a group to then make us move as a department.
That's all I had. Thank you so much. And thank you, Sarah, for indulging the question.
Thanks. Yeah. Junior parent and parent of a graduate 11 years ago. I have great things to say about guidance all along.
Awesome.
I, I think this is great. Thank you for your time and your effort.
Thank you.
And all your preparation. A-plus right here.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Am I allowed to say that? I just did. It's okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
She's an easy grader.
Yes. No.
I'll take it.
I'm not. Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We are going to move on to the Policy, Budget, and Recreation Department appointments. I will give a quick definition because I've been doing the Recreation Department liaison position for three years. Basically, you show up to the Recreation Board. You are a voting member of the Recreation Board. You participate in the lens that I personally look through when I'm at the Recreation Board is just regarding the safety and participation of the students of, of the town. And it's a great opportunity to look through another lens and see kind of where our students go when they're not with us, you know? And it's really, um, it's really great to see some of the workings and the inner workings of the Recreation Board. I am happy and I, I can serve another three years. It is a three-year appointment to the Recreation Board. If that is the will of the committee, we do need to volunteer. But if anybody else is interested, I, I'm not looking to step on anyone's toes. The meetings are once a month with a break in July, I believe. And then there's different events and things like that. So, again.
Can I, on that?
Sure.
Thank you. That's helpful, in terms of how that goes. I, as much as I want you to serve on it, because I actually do, because you're very, very good at it and you care very much, I wanted to throw out to the group, and it doesn't need to start this year or do it at all. I was struck by when joining the committee, many committee members who were newer, meaning three years in, were surprised to learn that there is a Rec. Department representative. You're very good about giving the reports, and that is appreciated. It made me wonder if, what the committee thinks about the wisdom of just rotating regularly three years, if there, if there's volunteers, because you're right, there's a voluntary position, is people's time, and you can't lay claim to it. And I more mean that just in terms of the health of the committee, even though if I had to pick someone, I would probably pick you. But that was just, just a thought that I had, and more, it's more just in line with, what's the structure we think is the best and most sustainable for creating the best committee year after year moving forward?
After having done it for three years, to answer that, I will let you know.
Yeah.
That consistency, like anything, consistency and showing up to the meetings, learning the procedure, how things work, it definitely adds to feeling like you're part of a group. You're, you're holding the, their board accountable, and you're there to, to be a voice for our board. So I think the three, I don't know if you, maybe I'm misunderstanding that.
I think every-
I think the three-year term is really, it's a great-
Necessary.
Yeah. I think the three-year term and having that be in line with the-
Yes.
The time that you sit on the committee is great. And it was, quite honestly, it was a great way to get my feet wet. And, and I'm not, you know, obviously you're on policy and our budget. But when you're a new member, it was a great way to be a liaison and just-
Learn stuff.
Yeah. Look through different lenses and learn stuff. But I do actually really enjoy it, so.
I know you do.
Yeah, I do.
And I know you're good at it. I-
No, it's, it's great. It's fun. It's-
So I would, I actually agree. I think we need to, I think it serves our committee better to rotate it. And it serves us better to be intentional. And, and we certainly do appreciate the light that you have shared on what is happening with that committee. I think that there are continued improvements. Like I'd love to know what votes were actually taken and how you voted as the, or how the vote is, that, how the representative of the school committee voted on those is maybe part of our information in our packets going forward. I actually, um, I didn't think I would say this three years ago. In fact, I didn't say it three years ago. But I actually am interested in doing it as a volunteer. I think that it's a part of the town that I do not understand very well and would like to understand better. So, um, you know, in the spirit of rotating and in the spirit of, you know, me wanting to understand better how we work with the Recreation Department, I would like to volunteer for this role.
I, I just have a quick question, and it's back on when you said this is a three-year role. It's defined as a three-year role?
Yes. It's a three-year role.
And I understand, like, you, you want consistency with it, but how, how do you ensure a three-year role when you have a board that constantly rotates? Like this board constantly rotates, like?
You can't.
Okay. So then it's not really a, a three-year role. But, I mean, where is it defined as?
It's, it's potentially a three-year role.
It's in the town bylaws. They ask for it, so maybe I, I have no idea. There were two longstanding Rec. Board members before me that I knew of.
No, I was just curious. It, that's, it's one of those.
That's a point.
It's a strange thing.
Otherwise, we would be consistently tied to the people that are voted in on that cycle, and we can't be tied to that. So-
I understood. I, and I agree with that. That's, it's, okay.
Okay. So we have a vote. I, it's, I'm interested in continuing my role, and Rob's interested in possibly taking it on. So I guess we're at a vote situation right now. So we're not going to do a roll call, but I guess we would just say all in favor of Sarah continuing to serve as the Recreation Board liaison?
I stand by what I said. I'd like you to do, I, I think, I think, I, I think we should rotate it, though. I mean, that, I just think, I would like, I think, or if people feel strongly not, then please speak up. But, uh, and it's not, I, more, I just think I like the idea of that. In the same way that every year we revisit, I don't want to do that with the Rec. Board, because it is a board. But, um, policy and, and budget, we look at every year too.
I just want to let you know, it is a town bylaw. So, you know, that they, it is a town mandate. I did, you know, was told that through the Recreation Board, that they need to have a school committee representative there. So, and I don't know where or why. It said three years, but that is the term, so.
Noted.
Because all, their, their, their term, their terms for all other committee members are three years. But again, we can't be tied to, because that would then mean we could, that we have two choices. And that-
Sure.
Does not, if you choose for whatever reason, so we can't be tied to that. We would, they certainly have a policy. Would a member, you know, if I, you know, because I am volunteering for this, and it is a volunteer role, as you've identified, if I choose not to run for reelection, or if I am not reelected, you know, a year from now,
But they're looking for that consistency, so that's why.
But that's, but we can't, that's not our responsibility.
Sure, it's not.
So that, we can't take that, that is not a part of our consideration. Our consideration is you have somebody here that is interested in volunteering. We've already expressed, at least two members have expressed the importance of rotating because we don't want it to become another thing that we just forget about. Again, going back to transparency and being intentional. So we can't tie ourselves to the requirement of their bylaw because we do know that they have provisions for when a member, for whatever reason, is not on, is not able to complete that full three-year term. So-
Well, I'm here and ready to commit to the three-year term. I think the, I've enjoyed it. I don't want to step down. But if you'd like to throw your name in, we can just have a vote. That's fine. Are we all okay with that?
Yeah, I have no more discussion. I raised my points.
Anyone have any further discussion? Michelle, you got to get closer to the microphone.
Oh, sorry, sorry. No, I agree. No, no, I, I just, I, I guess I don't understand the, this position well either. And again, so we're held to their bylaws. So their bylaws is the one who's saying that we need a three-year term.
No.
No.
The town bylaws.
Town bylaws say that recreation has to have a sitting school committee member. And for whatever, again, I didn't make it. For whatever reason, it is a three-year appointment. So-
Three-year appointment, that doesn't mean-
It's a three-year appointment if, if people are able to do so, you know?
Well said.
It's a three-year appointment if people are able to do so. And, um-
But we're saying that it may be work better if we rotate.
For our committee.
For our committee.
No, that I don't, we aren't saying, that's just, that's what I said.
Going forward is what Brent had said, going forward.
Because in the past, we had a longstanding member, and that scenario probably will not exist again.
We, we don't know.
It's, it's unlikely.
I would never say that.
Okay.
All right. We don't want to make any presumptions.
Okay, no, I guess we don't. Okay.
I, I would recommend, and I'd like everyone to consider that for, if you're going to, you know, serving as the chair, Sarah, I think it makes sense also for the committee to distribute the responsibilities. You know, the requirements as chair are different.
I appreciate that, but I've been taking on the role with many other roles outside of the school committee, so it's fine.
I think it serves the committee better to distribute-
Yeah.
How we all get involved. And I think it doesn't necessarily serve us to have, I'm going to say the same thing about the warrant signing in just a minute. I think it serves us better to have people rotate, and I think it serves us better to not have one person serving on three or four different things, not because of that one person's capability or time or commitment or anything. I just think it serves us better as a committee to distribute the responsibilities that we have with the community across the board.
Totally, totally understand that. Okay. At this point, are we gonna, are we okay to vote? Any further discussion? All in favor of Sarah serving on the Recreation Board? All in favor of Rob Canfield serving on the Recreation Board? Okay. Rob, congratulations to you.
Thank you.
The new Recreation Liaison. Next, Policy and Budget Subcommittee.
I mean, I, I can start it off, I guess.
Sure.
I'd like to be on the Policy Subcommittee. It's been something that I've been interested in all along. I've been following the policies at the school committee meetings. It's just a passion of mine, so. And I also think it's good to have some consistency on the Budget Subcommittee, especially since Mr. Yukna is retiring. So I think I'd be a good fit on the Policy Subcommittee.
Thank you so much. Anybody else interested in policy? Brent, I know you want to get some of that work done. I, I don't want to speak for you.
No, no, you're not. And if, uh, if, if folks think that that's, that's, if that's okay with folks, I would, I've done both. I've been on policy more. I'm comfortable on both, very comfortable on both, because mostly because of the AdCom thing before. But if, so if somebody wanted, wanted policy more than me, then I would, I would listen to you and believe you. But I, I love being on Policy Committee. I'd love to work with you, Nate. And it's, it's fun, so. And is that, but that, the, the other side of that coin is the other one. Sorry, Sarah.
Sure.
Michelle, I, I personally do not have a preference. So, Michelle, do you have a preference?
I, I do. I would prefer to stay on budget.
I, I love that you want to, so thank you.
But I'm also interested in, it was, this year, the Budget Subcommittee was very easy with Mr. Yukna. I'd be interested, uh-
Yeah.
And we're going through transition. I'd be interested in staying with this.
Okay. I, yeah, I'm good with that. Mr. Canfield, are you?
I am-
Okay with that?
Always happy to work with Miss Thaxton on a committee.
Great. Okay.
Then thank you for listening to me.
So, um, all in favor of Brent Ruder and Nathan Erman being on the Policy Subcommittee?
Sweet.
And that would be a, uh, all, all against, all opposed, none? So that would be a five-zero-zero vote in favor of that, and all in favor of Michelle Thaxton and Nate Erman? I'm sorry, Michelle Thaxton and Rob Canfield being on the Budget Subcommittee?
Awesome.
And that would be another five-zero-zero. Thank you very much. That was awesome. Next is the warrant signing procedure. And again, for transparency, I've been doing that for the, I was voted on three years ago. We've revisited three different times, and we said we were going to talk about it again tonight. What I do is I show up to sign the warrants anytime between noon on Friday and noon on Tuesday. So those, that's the timeframe that you have to show up. There is a lot of communication with the accounting department because stuff happens, there's vacations, there's holidays, or whatever. There are forms that you fill out. You sign all the warrants. You go through them. And there are forms that we fill out and we keep in the record. Any items over or greater than 25,000 are separated out, and we do sign off on that. So that is sometimes, um, you know, just reviewing all the warrants, making sure everything's in line. So that's the job. And is there anybody interested to step up and do that? And there is some time where you are called in on other times to sign different things as well, just in full disclosure.
Oh, sure.
Yeah.
And I think from a, the big consideration is it has, you have to be available sometimes on, during business hours on a weekday.
It is always business hours. Yes.
Some, you know, that eliminates people who are not available on a regular, you know, typically on a Monday afternoon or Tuesday morning, right? I don't know with, at the current committee, I know that that pool includes you, Sarah, and me. I don't know, and we don't know what your schedule is yet, right? And Michelle, I don't know what that, what that includes for you, or if you're, and that's your business, if you choose to offer that or not, but-
I will say, if anybody would like to know, that being on Budget Subcommittee the last two years has, it's been a great lens to look through, to read through the warrants every week. I know it sounds, it sounds tedious, but it really has been a great way to see the budget actually come alive, weekly, see what the expenses are and how the money is spent. I, I just, my own-
No, I, I did, I, when we went into COVID, I did that before you joined the committee. So I agree with you. It's, it's helpful to see both sides of it, not just in the big picture. So it is a, and it's a, this process was a hu, a huge improvement over the last process. So, um, again, I don't know, Brent, I don't know if you have the availability, Michelle. I don't know what your feelings are toward this, but-
How late in the day is the office comfortably open without inconveniencing?
Four.
Great. Mondays and Tuesdays, I could do it before four.
Okay. I've done it on occasion. I am available to do warrant signing.
Are you interested? And again, I, I, it's, distribution is very important, as I've said now seven or eight times during this meeting. If you're interested in doing, Michelle, I think it was, it's a great opportunity for us to rotate as well as create distribution of responsibility.
Okay. I, that's fine. I'm fine with signing warrants. Like I said, I've done it.
And I don't mind being called in too.
And just keep in mind too, that it can be, if somebody's sick or they can't make it, like it can be a team effort. So other people can fill in.
Yes, I've signed, Michelle has signed.
Exactly. Other people can fill in, and it's not something where one person is just, you know? Only one person has access to the material. you know, only one person has access to the material, we certainly
That's
Step in for each other, party of five, keep saying it. Okay, so
Thank you for the distinction.
Eddie, all in favor of Michelle Thaxton being the warrant signer from here on out? And this is, just to be clear, I think when we originally discussed it, we said we were going to revisit it every six months, so we would talk about it right before the end of the year again. So if there's, and of course, if anything needs to be adjusted, we can always have a conversation. But is everybody in line with that or
I am.
Is everybody comfortable?
I am.
I actually think we should consider at some point going to just this annual cycle, it doesn't, we haven't changed it in the two years, we hasn't been changed. So we haven't changed it, there hasn't been a reason to change it, so, I mean, and it's not a policy, it's not a documented, it's documented in a meeting minute.
It's a conversation, but
It is something that we should consider just making it a part of this meeting as part of the reorganization. I think it makes more sense, unless there's an issue where, you know, Michelle is no longer available and we have to come up with something.
We can have a conversation for sure. Are you, are you comfortable with that, saying that we will do this until the next reorganization, you know, with obviously substitutions as needed? Okay, all in favor of Michelle signing the warrants on a weekly basis? And that would be five-zero-zero. Now, before I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn, I just did have a couple little updates. One is really time-sensitive. We've talked about the Maya Rewards, the insurance rewards. There are five people here, there are, I believe, four more hours left for, of classes and Friday is the deadline, correct, Mr. Yukna? Friday is the deadline, so if anybody can take, I can have, um, I can have Jamie, Saint Jamie, thank you so much for everything you do. I can have Jamie send around the four that are pertinent to school committee that will give us the credits we need to move forward into next year. And then I would like to make sure, as being the person that has kind of been the liaison for that, that we, we definitely check in over the, the course of, like, maybe quarterly and just see how we're doing on our rewards, so it's not a crunch at the end because that, that can be uncomfortable for everyone, so.
That's smart, yeah, if we start, if we just put that in quarterly?
Yeah, yeah, we had some staffing, I think somebody was out from eternity leave and we had some like hiccups after Babs retired. Babs was, I'd be signed up for 17 courses and not even know it and be in a webinar and she was, she was really on it, but when Babs retired, obviously, we had, and then we have a fantastic person there now, really getting on it, so I think it'd be great. Mr. Yukna, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, I would say it's the, we're the only, well, the School Board is the only board that doesn't max out on the credits. You know, as far as, as far as the rest of the stuff, you know, the rest of the town departments this year, they've fully maxed out. As far as like facilities and stuff, we've fully maxed out. But it's, it's this one thing that I think we're the only one kind of pulling down the town, getting a hundred percent in the rebates. We do very well as a town, but it's the one area that we don't do too well on, so. It happened for years. I mean, a couple of years ago, Sarah and I did all of them.
How many hours are there annually, roughly? Like, what, how many hours of course were
It's a, it's a seven percent credit to earn and
I don't know how that
I think that year I did five, you did probably the same. It doesn't really take long, to be honest with you. But it doesn't make any sense that I'm doing School Board, you know, stuff. It's really, that's your responsibility, not mine, so, but, again, I think Sarah's point of bringing it forward to you guys on a regular basis is the right way to deal with it, so.
Thank you.
Katie Lang will, will submit it out to you.
Katie's been great, she's great, so
Thanks for bringing that up.
Yeah, no problem, I, I mean, we, now we got a crunch till Friday, so, like I said, I'll have Jamie send around the, I think there's four remaining topics can be chosen from and if we can distribute them, I'll probably do one more, I did one today, I'll probably do one more and then there'll only be three, so. And lastly, I don't really have any recreation updates.
Oh, sorry.
We typically, I don't have it on the agenda, I didn't know if we were going to
We can, we
Accept it.
Okay, I thought we could.
Okay, I didn't see it, so. Anyway, I just wanted to, as far as recreation, everything's going great for the summer, we're staffed up, we're, everybody's signing up, the kids are looking good, it's, everything's great and farmer's market starts again at the end of this month. Anyone, anything else, Mr. Canfield?
I just motion to adjourn.
Well, we're going to wait on that. Nathan? Michelle? Brent?
I had nothing.
Dr. Burrows?
The last thing I'd say that I didn't say under my update was good luck to all of our athletics teams in the playoffs, because I think every one of them have made the playoffs.
That's amazing. Dr. Burrows, you got something.
Between now and next school committee meeting, we'll have our Special Olympics on, on Monday, May
20th.
May 20th?
20th.
We're really, really excited, we have a couple of other schools coming, it's, it's going to be a really big event, so looking forward to that, looking forward to our, our student athletes performing.
Mr. Yukna?
Yep, I'm good.
And one other thing, there was a Metco conference, correct?
There was, there was, we had a, a number of staff at the middle and high schools attend the Metco Legacy Spring Conference. That was the conference that, that you and Michelle had attended last year. And the staff that attended, we prioritized staff that hadn't already seen Dr. Adolf Brown present. We had him in, in the district a number of years ago and he was really well-received,